Okay, good evening, everyone. My name is Laura Schifrin, and I call the meeting to order of the planning board on this June 24th at 6:37 PM. I'll have a roll call vote, please.
Carol Hoxton, present.
Robert Darian, present.
Andrew.
Andrew Shepherd, present.
Laura Schifrin, present. Is Lance on? Okay.
He was just, he was, I think, sworn in this afternoon, but he had another commitment for this evening.
Yeah, we know. Um, I, okay, I thought he was gonna try to get in on soon, but maybe he's having trouble with that as well. Um, but I, okay. We did the roll call vote. Uh, would you join me in a pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to thank all of our veterans and also those that are serving now and all of our um, EMT, emergency responds responders. Um, we certainly couldn't do anything without you. We appreciate that. Um, meeting is being recorded and it will be uploaded to the Town of Townsend YouTube channel. 1.4, I do not have any chairmen's additions or deletions, except that I wanted to welcome Lance McNally. He was appointed and sworn in this afternoon, and we look forward to seeing him soon. He will be filling the one, the one-year seat through April of 2025. Uh, do I have any other additions or deletions, Beth?
I just got your correspondence from Representative Marcus Scarsdale. Do you want it under 4.3?
Okay, um, I thought, I thought we could talk about that, or I can announce that uh, before Joe does, Mr. Doyle comes on. Will that be okay? I'll take that as a yes.
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 Um, all right, we have a few minutes. So Beth, do you want to do your administrative report? 1.5.
All right, kind of log into the meeting. Uh, so what we have for applications, our anticipated applications. Uh, 27 Skales Lane, still ongoing for the request for certificate of completion of a stormwater management system. 22 Main Street, still ongoing, site plan modification. We're still waiting on the site plan modification, special permit application, revised site plan. Last correspondence was on May 30th from the owner, representative of the owner, who updated that the site plan would be submitted soon. Um, there's been no other correspondence. Uh, the 108, 110, 112 West Meadow Road, stormwater management permit was issued. The decision was drafted, endorsed, and correspondence of the board's decision has been sent to the owner and the abutters. Um, interdepartmental approvals, three Campbell Farm Lane and nine Turnpike Road through the permalink for storming pools, site visits and compliance. Um, older project, 98 to 100 West Meadow Road, uh, the land use department has no update. Again, 22 Main Street, the update is, um, last correspondence, uh, 22 West Meadow Road, lockup solar array. The consultant will attend the planning board July 8th meeting with the, um, the vegetative report, the annual vegetation report. Um, as far as stormwater management permits, the only major stormwater management permit that's currently up to date on our monthly inspection reports is the PFAS treatment plant. Um, everybody else is at least monthly.
Okay. Good that they're all following suit. Um, I have a question, because, um, the pool thing caught my attention. I don't, we've never, the whole time I've been on planning anyway, we've not heard anything about a pool permit.
This was just, yeah, permalink, it's, it's a land use approval. Um, the land use just has an opportunity to review building department permits that might have, like, an environmental impact for conservation. So I just mentioned it, uh, that here. Um, and the, there, all right, so the Monticuce Regional Planning Commission and Monticuce Regional Transit Authority are working on the safety action plan. Um, I don't know if you guys remember that, but that, they did recently have a recording of a public meeting available. They had a meeting at Pittsburgh State and online uh, to talk about the progress of the plan. Um, I'll send that out to everybody if they're interested, but they were very grateful, um, to T-Cam for publicizing that on, um, the Cable 9 channel. Uh, they were really grateful that we got the word out about the survey, because that survey is, I guess they got a really good response, and, um, they're gonna be updating us, you know, on that as we go along. So that was the first public meeting. There'll be more, one more in the fall, at least.
Okay. Would that complete your report, Beth?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, 2.1 is the introduction of Patrick. And Patrick, I don't want to ruin your last name. I really don't want to embarrass myself by doing that. Would you mind introducing yourself to the board and, and tell us about, a little bit about your interest?
Yeah, no problem. Uh, so Patrick Kwanchik, uh, been resident of Townsend since 2022, so relatively new. Uh, I grew up in New Hampshire, uh, went to study at New Hampshire University, UNH, and graduated 2008. Um, active in the Air Force. I've been in for 16 years. I work at HSMF Space. Uh, I've been there since 2022. Uh, so I'm interested in serving on the planning board because really don't know how it operates. I've never served on any town board, uh, so I'm just curious to see what's going on in Townsend. I see a lot of untapped potential in the town, so, uh, happy to help. Happy to serve.
Oh, well, thank you very much for your interest and most of all, thank you for your service and your continued service. I appreciate it. We all do, and you're my neighbor.
Okay.
For self, for me. So, um, any questions from the board?
No questions as well.
So what's your name? You were, I retired from the state.
Oh, um, I work kind of a very large IT system.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, what did you do? All right.
If you talk, could you talk towards the owl? Because I'm, I'm missing what you're saying.
Oh, oh, it's in the owl, yes.
Okay, um.
I don't, I don't have any questions, but Patrick, welcome. Looking forward to getting to know you.
Yep, thanks, Eddie.
I would, if nobody else has any of the comments, Chaz, did you have any comments?
Thank you for stepping up. I appreciate it. I am forever in your debt.
So I would entertain a motion to, um, move forward Patrick's name. Can you say that again? I thought I could say it, but.
Kwanchik?
Kwanchik. Kwanchik?
Kwanchik, yep.
Um, to the, um, they, to the affiliate position, our associate member, beginning July 1st of '24 and going through June 30th of '25. It's a yearly appointment, um, Patrick, so that you know. Motion?
I second.
Okay, so Andrew made the motion. Who seconded? Was that you, Robert?
Yes.
Carol, I did hear you though, Robert. Okay, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote, please.
Carol Hoxton, yes.
Robert Darian here.
Yes, Robert, is, yes or no?
Robert Darian, yes.
Andrew Shepherd, yes.
Laura, yes. You, Patrick, we look forward to having you on board. Your name will go before the next, um, I believe it'll be the next one or not? Chaz?
That, that's what I was gonna ask you. We have to have 14 days on notice on, because we have to have a joint meeting. So we have to have, uh, 14 days. And our next meeting is on the 2nd?
July?
Yep.
Okay. Okay.
So.
But that's July 2nd.
Correct, but Madam Chair, if I may,
Yeah.
if he's going to be an associate member, then we can put him on the next meeting. Uh, however, we may have a meeting before that because in lieu of, um, our interviews, if it's gonna be a, uh, within a 14-day period, I'll notify on your admin and, uh, Beth and I can figure out the 14 days, and, and if that's the case, then I can always put this on that.
Okay.
If we can get a quorum of the planning board to get a joint.
Okay, and that's a quick call usually, you know, guys, when we do that, so, um. Okay, and do you think it will be possible, maybe for the, once the boards approve, that the letter goes out quicker so that, um, he can be sworn in before the July 8th meeting? We have a meeting on July 8th.
Right, but I'm not sure. You've gotta have 14-day post. And it's gotta be a joint meeting.
What?
It should be on Saturday. It's okay.
Is there, is a purpose?
Can't hear that. Our audio is off.
Say that again, Laura.
I'm, my audio's on.
We couldn't hear you.
When somebody's talking on, we're having problems with the owl. Somebody's talking there. It, it doesn't allow your voice to come through.
Okay. Is everyone?
We have to post for a joint meeting and we have to have a 14-day posting. That's the problem.
Okay, I'm trying to get the, I'm trying to get the answer like, why?
That's.
State law?
That's open meeting law.
Oh.
If it's a joint meeting, you have to post 14 days in advance.
Oh, we've had so many joint meetings, I never knew them.
We posted them 14 days in advance.
Okay.
That's why it seems like where those, those joint meetings seem to take so long. It's that we have to wait that 14-day period. That's why we've, we've had problems. So anyway.
Yeah, so that has to be after the next time you meet and after you say, okay, no, we have to meet together.
Right.
All right, just let us know.
Um, I'll work it out with Beth tomorrow.
Okay. Okay, so moving on. Uh, 6:45 appointment is now a little late. So I apologize. Joe, do you want to come to the table so that you're near the owl?
Sure, and I can face this way so that I appear on the Zoom.
Okay, and at, at this time, since I, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, that this has, um, something to do with what we're doing as far as our zoning goes. And, uh, right now, the infamous Milton case and how they refused to do the zoning and the state has sued them. Is there any update to that?
To, uh, the Milton case?
Yeah.
No, there is not. It's scheduled for October.
Oh. Okay. Well, anyway, in, did everybody get, uh, get to see, um, Representative Scarsdale's letter to me? She basically, um, praising us, you know, for, uh, working hard on trying to get a bylaw established to be in compliance. So, um, rather than being one of the communities fighting it, we are gonna try to do something about it, whether it comes to fruition or not. And as our minute, I don't know if anybody got to read our minutes yet. Uh, thank you, Beth, for getting them to us today. They'll be on the next agenda. But Joe was most of our last meeting. Um, or an, an hour, I think we spent with them. A lot of, um, back and forth and, uh, ideas that came up from that and then kind of compromises. So Joe, you're gonna be reporting on that tonight, right?
Uh, yes, the, um, reanalysis of the potential districts and, um, our recommendations on those. But also, I have brought you an amended bylaw in response to, uh, some of the feedback I received last night. So, um, uh, if you want, if you want to start with the districts, we can. Um, though I noticed that we have two new, uh, members joining. I'm wondering if, uh, a little bit of background, uh, would be desirable.
I, I. I'm not familiar with this at all, so.
So, okay.
But that's okay.
Um, let me just say, is, did Lance get on?
No. No.
No, he's not on. So I think that everybody has these documents in their portal. So mostly everybody who's on now, except our new guy, Patrick, um, hasn't seen them. But Beth, have you given him copies?
Yes, yes. Uh, Patrick or Lance? Patrick or Lance? Lance?
Patrick.
Yes, he has a print copy here.
Here you go. Okay. Because, um, Patrick's gonna get the minutes of the last meeting too, right, Beth?
Yep, we've got them right here. They're not approved, but.
Right, right, but they're pretty, it's pretty much what we did.
Yep, oh, yeah.
So now you can go ahead, Joe.
Okay, um, Madam Chairman, I have brought one more item tonight that I hadn't emailed previously. It was, uh, just ready today. It's, uh, the output of, um, the compliance models on the new districts. Uh, all of the members here have it. Beth has a paper copy. Uh, Beth, is there any way that you could like, take, try to take a photograph of that and email it to them?
I could, yeah.
Yes. And we, I don't have it as an electronic document for you to send anyway, but I think that might be the best way.
So no scanning or then share screen possibility?
Uh, right at this time now, I'm, for some reason, I'm unable to log into my, um, my, uh, SharePoint. I have no idea why. I'm working on it, but it's not letting me. All right.
Um, all right. So, um, I have, so I sent the memo, um, to the, I'm, uh, looking at, uh, the three locations that had previously been examined and considering alternate, um, versions of those. Uh, the MRPC has reviewed, reviewed the zoning districts, uh, previously under consideration for include inclusion in the MBTA overlay district and is pleased to present the following analysis and recommendations. Because the boundaries of the districts previously studied were based on existing lot lines, most of them were considerably larger than is required for Townsend under, by the MBTA Communities Act. We have drawn and analyzed new districts that more closely fit Townsend's requirements, resulting in significant reductions in the acreage or the number of units in each. So to start with District 2, District 2 was the, uh, the furthest, uh, yeah, the furthest west one, which had frontage only on Old Country Road, uh, Old City Road. And the MRPC does not recommend the inclusion of any version of District 2 in the multifamily overlay district. Uh, because this site only has frontage on Old City Road, which is a narrow winding rural route, uh, we don't think it provides, uh, suitable, uh, access, suitable safe a- access for a development of up to 178 residential units. And it doesn't really have an opportunity for a second access. Um, it should, it, it should, a development that size go in or should it be rezoned for that? It would probably require, uh, upgrades and widening, uh, and straightening projects on Old City Road. And so we're recommending against that one. Um, the former District 3, now this is the one closest to the town center on Old Pittsburgh Road. Uh, we looked at a new version of this, a modified version of this to reduce its, which reduced its size by about half, um, and pulled it further away from the Aquifer Overlay District. But even doing this, the remaining district was considerably larger than is required. Um, now, there, there are certain advantages to this district, namely its proximity to, uh, um, the center of town and the commercial area there, as well as to some other, um, multifamily that has been, multifamily developments along that or nearby on that stretch of Pittsburgh Road. So if this location was chosen, it raises the possibility of possibly having enough um, intensity of residential use that it could support some commercial development along there and justify, uh, bus service. So those are reasons why you, uh, might consider this location. However, this property only has frontage on Pittsburgh Road, and once again, given the number of units, we don't think it would be wise to do this in a location where there's only one access. We think it needs a couple, uh, two accesses. Uh, if the board, if you're really committed to, uh, this location, um, we can take another look at it, but there will have to be some, um, more decisions made about its final shape.
So question, anyone? Um, how much, it's just, how much frontage does that property have? I don't have any maps in front of me.
Um.
Particular problem? Is that the one near Lunenburg?
No, the, the, District 1 that I'm about to get to is the one that's near Lunenburg. This is the one that is about halfway up Route 13, near the water tower. The, uh, the, uh, the.
It road, um, now, but I thought that it was, I was in my mind thinking Pittsburgh Road, and if there was enough frontage, you could do to, you know, egresses or entrances, if you will.
It would be something like that. It would be something like fitting in two separate entrances, um, not too far away from each other in order to meet the requirement of having, um, two separate accesses. But they'd both be on the same road. They'd both be near each other on the same road. Um, if something happened on that road that was blocking, uh, that was preventing access to it, it would most likely be, or quite possibly be blocking access to both. So even with that amount of frontage, doing, uh, uh, two accesses there, it's not quite the same as having accesses from two separate roads, which would, which is really the, the ideal for something like this. Um, okay, so to, we've already been met with the memo, District 1. District 1 was the district that was drawn over your outlying commercial district down by the town line by Lunenburg on Route 13. Uh, this district is located on Route 13 on the town's southern boundary, and it has the best highway access of, uh, any location in Townsend. Um, there's really nowhere in Townsend that has great highway access, but that is probably the best in town. Um, we think that that location represents an important economic development opportunity for the, for the town, and that that needs to play into your decision about this district. Um, MRPC was able to reduce the size of the district by about half to approximately 13 acres, giving Townsend the opportunity to preserve about half the parcel for business development. So the first thing we thought of was to draw a north-south boundary line down the center of the parcel. Um, we put in the housing on the west side and leaving the part with the frontage on Pittsburgh Road as the commercial. Um, that would maximize the commercial area's frontage and, and its development protection. Uh, however, drawing the multifamily overlay district this way would leave it with frontage only on Old City Road, which gives us our, uh, which is the same problem we had before. Um, so we think that it's important to have, uh, to draw the district in such a way that it will have an access out to Route 13. So we've come up with three versions of District 1 for your consideration. The first, District 1.1, uh, basically draws an east-west line across the property. The northern part of the district is the, uh, would be the multifamily overlay, and, uh, the southern part would, uh, be the underlying, outlying commercial zone. Um, there's a couple of advantages to doing this way. First of all, um, the wetlands on the site that are along Route 13 are located in the northern portion, and including the wetlands in the residential is likely to protect them better than in the commercial, uh, over the long term. Um, secondly, this locates, uh, that maximizes the commercial in the south, and the south, once again, is closer to, closer to the highway, closer to the business and residential centers in the region. So it would be, uh, be mar- largely more attractive for development.
Hey, Joe, really big question?
Yes.
The, I'm looking at the map on my computer and there's purple dots on the map you supplied.
Right, those are the wetlands.
The, oh, purple dot is wetland. Got it, all right.
Yeah, it's, it's actually, um, that is a land that's excluded, um, under the MBTA law. Um, we don't get to count that, um, because it can't be built on. And in this, there's a couple of categories of land that gets excluded, and one of them is wetlands. In this particular case, there's the wetlands. Uh, it's, I believe it's labeled excluded land on that map. Okay, so that's 1.1, uh, drawing the line basically straight across the property. Um, 1, 2, uh, District 1, 2. Um, oh, oh, the downside of that is it leaves you with the least confrontage in the commercial zone of the three options. Um, it's. Also, the option would be greatest amount of land adjacent to Route 13 in residential zoning. Uh, which, based on the discussion last time, that might be considered undesirable. So Districts 1.2A and 1.3 refine this concept by leaving even more of the land on Pittsburgh Road out of the overlay and in commercial zone. Now, we did this by creating a district with a large area of multifamily overlay district on the west side of the properties. And then drawing a strip along of the overlay zone, uh, along the northern boundary out to Route 13. So, uh, so that it does touch Route 13. And the different versions of that are in different widths. This shape allows more of the land close to Pittsburgh Road to be preserved for commercial development. Uh, it has, uh, the benefit of allowing two access points to the residential neighborhood, a back door on Old City Road, which, uh, could, uh, which would be conveniently decided to create a four-way intersection with Laurel Woods Drive, and a front door on Route 13. Um, 1.2A shows a strip that's 100 foot wide. So, uh, we're thinking 100-foot wide strip, uh, picture a right-of-way, and then one row of, um, most likely the small, one row of housing along it. Um, in this case, most likely, um, the smaller two-family, uh, single and two-family housing we were talking about last time, just because of the dimensions and, and the lot sizes. Um, whereas, uh, the other one has a, uh, a strip 100 meters wide, um, little, uh, you know, 330 feet wide, which, uh, would allow more residential development within that projection. Picture, for example, the road and both, and residential developments along both sides of that access road as it heads west into the site.
Um, sorry, that, yes, why didn't you switch to meters instead of just making it feet?
Um, okay, the reason, uh, actually, the reason for that is it was, uh, the first time, uh, our GIS department ran it, they left it switched to meters instead of feet, and were trying to run it at 100 feet, and we figured that, uh, we wanted to show a larger one than the 100-foot one, so hey, let's just use the 100-meter one, because we've already had it. Um, now, the, that, that, which brings up the option, or something in between. Well, you know, something in between 100 feet and, uh, maybe a 200-foot wide strip, maybe a 400-foot wide strip. But, uh, there's examples of, you know, this is the direction we think we should go in.
With a 100-foot wide strip. It's conceivable there could be a road in the center and housing on each side.
Uh, no, with a 100-meter wide strip. You could get it on both sides. I'm thinking with 100-foot wide strip. Yeah, right. I'm thinking with a 100-foot wide strip, it would just be along one side.
I, I get that part, but we just, in the, in the writing, it says 100 feet wide and then it goes to meters too.
Yes.
This is metric versus standard, that's all.
Yes.
Like, we could have done whatever 100 meters is a feet. That's, that's significant.
It would have been easier to design, but the Republican.
Because I saw 100 and 109, but the picture is, oh wait, it says meters, not feet. That's all.
So, um, each of these options assumes a maximum residential of 15 units per acre. Um, that's the minimum that, uh, the, the minimum. Um, that's the minimum that, uh, the, the minimum, maximum, so, so the maximum minimum. You have to allow up to, uh, fifteen units per acre according to the M V T A zoning. Um.
Oh, it's a minimum, right?
We, uh, we discussed, it's, that.
We, I know, we went into detail, it's a lost time.
Yeah, it, it, it's, it, it's a minimum for the, for the zoning, and it's a maximum for the, uh, for the builder. It's, you have to allow them to go up to fifteen units per acre. You don't have to allow them to go any denser than fifteen, okay? Um, no, but the point that I make in this last paragraph is, um, towns are allowed to set that density higher than twenty units per acre, higher than fifty units per acre, to go up to twenty, to go up to twenty-something. Um, the one on the map, the, uh, shape on the map that's labeled one point two, the notice is smaller than one point two A. Um, what, which, what I wanted to show you with that is you could preserve some more land in the commercial zoning and, uh, exclude it from the overlay, um, if you went higher than fifteen in your maximum density. Um, we think that at about, at twenty, at about twenty-something, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, you, uh, per acre, you could save three more acres, um, excluding from the multifamily overlay district. Doing so would require some, um, compromises in terms of the density and, um, height restrictions. But it is an option that should the board decide, we, it's really important to preserve as much of this outside, uh, as much of our commercial outside the M F O D as possible, that's an option that you could preserve. So that's our analysis of three, of the three districts. We are strongly recommending a version of District one.
Okay, so, if I may, I, I'm looking at the maps now too, and why, it looks to me like, and I could be wrong unless there's a whole row of houses there, um, that there's access on Pittsburgh Road and Old City Road on the same parcel. So that's two roads.
Yes, yes, and that was purposely designed that way. The, this, the, uh, the, the, the big District one parcel has access on Old City and Pittsburgh Road. And, uh, we think that it's important to take advantage of both of those accesses and require two accesses to the, um, to the residential development. And not just have it come off Old City Road.
Okay, then, and what is the frontage on that narrow piece? It's supposed to be the driveway, like.
Yeah, the, uh, well, there, there's the two versions of that, uh, that are District one point three and District one point two A. Uh, Districts one point two A is a hundred feet of frontage on Pittsburgh Road, and on, uh, District one three, it is a hundred meters, approximately three hundred and thirty-four feet of frontage. And you can see, and you can see what the difference makes. If you go with a, uh, with a narrower projection out to Pittsburgh Road, that means that the, um, residential zoning comes a little bit, the, the main body of the residential zoning is a little bit further east, a little bit more into your commercial area. If you go, uh, with a wider projection out to Pittsburgh Road, then that north-south boundary line is a little bit further west. So, you know, if you look at the shape of what's left over in the parcel outside of the multifamily overlay district in blue, you can see in the one point two A, it's sort of an L-shaped, and, uh, but it goes up higher, and in one point three, it's a, a rectangle, and, uh, but it begins a little further south.
Okay, what, what does everybody think about that, like?
Um, if I don't, if you guys don't mind, I, I have to jump on a flight soon. Um, Joe, I know I didn't get a chance to, to meet you at the last meeting. I, I am, I personally do really like District three. I like the proximity to the center of town. I think this is gonna be, I mean, this is a seismic decision that we're gonna make that's gonna last generations. And I, I like the idea of having some, attempting to get some of the higher density closer to the center so that, you know, residents there, when they make a decision, you know, am I going to Hannaford's, am I gonna drive to Lunenburg? Because I'm on the Lunenburg line, or I'm closer to the center of town, I'm gonna go to Townsend, or I'm gonna support my more Townsend businesses. So I, I am partial to that. I don't know if that ends up being a split. Um, you know, you, you have two zones, you know, closer to, you know, the District ones and the District three. But I do wanna, you know, stress that I'd like to put a little more effort into looking at that, see how we can make that work.
Okay, thank you, Andrew, and I, and I would, is there, is there objection or? Um, do you think that there would be backlash if we wanted to do two districts? We can do two districts. We can do more overlay districts. Okay, Ron.
Your head.
The, I'm.
One's enough.
I think we better run with one.
Right.
I, I don't wanna do more than the one hundred and seventy-nine that we're being told to do. But if we did fifty one place and, you know, whatever the balance is, um, somewhere else, you know.
I, I'm just concerned if we do more than one district, knowing the government, the way I do, they would come down and look at us and say, well, you've got two districts, so let's, let's fill them all up um, at some point in the future. So I would rather, right now, just identify one overlay district.
I, uh, I think it's important in the future to preserve as much commercial, uh, areas possible. Um, so in that light, from the map here, I would favor District one point two for that location. Of all the options for the Lunenburg, uh, end of it, I would favor one point two, only because it preserves most of the commercial district that we have with a minimum of impact on it. And, um, and then even though that would be a higher density allowed, uh, I think it'd be more challenging for a developer to execute anyway. Um, and then on District three, I agree with Andrew. Um, I think that location, uh, more towards the center of sound would actually be more desirable. Particularly, um, where it's pretty much residential area already. Um. Uh, those are my comments.
Okay, so I know here in your letter, you said that District three is still considerably wider than is required.
Yes, it would, it would take a little bit more work to, um, to figure out the parcels. And it would be a more complicated conversation, what to exclude and what to include, than we really felt, uh, we could do back at the office.
Okay, because I wouldn't wanna put forward a parcel that's more than what we got.
No, absolutely, whatever, what, we, we're recommending coming up with, uh, a district that is appropriately sized for the town's requirements. Um, the ones we've got on here, um, one seventy-nine, one eighty-two, and one eighty, and the requirement is one seventy-nine. So, um, those were the three options for Districts, for District one. Uh, what we've got left here for District three is three hundred and forty, so we'd need to cut that, um, roughly in half. And we'd need to figure out how to go about cutting those parcels in half based on really, uh, based on feedback and knowledge from the town and, um, a more detailed study of those parcels.
But you also said that we don't have, that the overlay district does not have to be a full parcel.
No, it does not. We can, we can select among the parcels that are there and among part of, there's one big parcel in the back that we'd probably end up, um, split zoning, the way we're proposing splits on the parcel. Uh, we proposed to split zone the parcel in District one, yes.
And how much front, frontage is on District three?
I do not have the number in my head. I want to estimate it in the three to four hundred foot range. Looking at, all right, looking at the map, the. All right, this is a hundred meters. And it is giving me hundreds of feet, um, the, uh, the frontage along the street. In terms of the buildable frontage, uh, your, if your question is about those, I, I, I gather you're going in the direction of would it be able to get, uh, two meaningful accesses in? In terms of what's buildable, I know it gets, it goes uphill at that location. I can't say now how far apart two buildable frontage locations are. But that is something we're gonna look at if the board wants more study of District three.
Is the number of units, is that including an area that's reserved for commercial? Or is that if?
No, each of these, uh, uh, this line, final unit capacity per district assumes just a multifamily overlay district. This is based on, um, it's called the compliance model. It comes to us from the state. It's a complicated spreadsheet. And, uh, uh, and entering, um, the parcel information and also, uh, zoning information and whatnot, and it calculates how many units could be built. And so this number in the gray, these final unit capacities per district, that is what each of our proposals, uh, recommend. Um, you can see for.
Including the reservation for some commercial?
There's no reservation for some commercial in any of these districts. So, uh, uh, let, let, if you're asking, uh, about District three, it's only proposing, this, this is the maximum number of housing units that could be built in the blue parcel.
Okay.
Within that, and then outside of that would not be in the multifamily overlay district, would just still be the commercial zone.
So realistically, a developer would do less than one eighty-two.
To get to one, yes, to, uh, we, yes, and this was quite a bit of the conversation last time. To get to these numbers, it's assuming a maximum buildout of, um, multifamily apartment buildings. Um, there's no sewer. Uh, we think that there's, that the lack of sewer is, is, would be a major impediment to building out at this number of units, um, of multifamily buildings. Um, and when we turn to the, uh, that would result in either building it out of multifamily, but they don't get to those numbers. Or, and when we turn to the bylaw here, um, the bylaw was, uh, was written to, uh, give developers a second option, a second ramp. They can build, you know, a multifamily housing, a multifamily campus like we, like we've all seen, um, with the, uh, units lined up at a certain amount. Or, and there's a, um, a set of dimensional requirements that that has to meet, that's built on, that's based on making sure that type of housing is ready to build. But then we're off, also offering a second set of dimensional requirements for single and two-family homes, small lot, single and two-family homes. We think that, yeah, that, that developers, instead of building a hundred and seventy-nine, um, multifamily units and can, uh, might be only get, able to get, say, a hundred out of it, they might choose to build those hundred as single two-family homes, each with their own, um, on, you know, onsite septic. Um, a lot smaller, a lot easier, um, and permitting and engineering and everything to build the real small-scale, uh, septic systems than one for a big multifamily, so yes.
Is this something, I took these pictures in Westford.
Mm-hmm.
Made the private drive, so I couldn't go way into it.
Okay.
But there are cottages in Westford.
Oh, are those single families?
Yes, as far as I know, they are. Um, as far as I know, that they're single family, they're, they're small, they're small units.
Yes.
Because, uh, you could split in there, both together, but could do something like this.
Yes, yeah, that might be a good example to get used to what that, that type of housing would look like. What small lot, single family housing. Um, these are typically being done, this looks like they're cottage courts. A lot of, uh, towns are adopting, uh, cottage court-style developments, um, as part of like open space residential developments where they're preserving a section of the lot, and they're, that's why they're building the, uh, residential, uh, as such a small, um, uh, you know, that densely. Um, but, um, other options, uh, but in this, but, but rather than that being an alternative to acre lot, some, um, subdivision development, that could also be an alternative to multifamily development. Instead of a three-family on eighteen thousand square feet, they build three single families on six thou, each on six thousand square feet.
Let me ask from this, this table here, um, do all of these districts have town water?
No. Uh, all the ones on thirteen do.
All the ones on thirteen do, okay.
I believe presently, the water is closest to District three right now, and there's not town water over by District one. I know it tends to go that way, though.
It goes up to Old City Road, Andrew.
It doesn't. Um, but I'm gonna take this moment, my vote, I'd love to look more into District three, but I gotta bounce. So thank you, guys. I'll see you later.
Have a good night.
Okay, um. Carol, when you showed those pictures in Westford, do they have city water, city sewer?
Um, half, it's, Westford, just like here, some of it's well water and some of it's town water. I'm not sure about those houses. Maybe I could stop by the town hall one day and go ask the building inspector about them. Um, but, because when I lived in Westford, I was all on, I, both my houses had well water. There were some areas that had town water, but most, everybody was, a lot of houses were on well water. I mean, I've been, this is the first time in like thirty years I've had town water, well, we've had my own well.
So the, um, the, the reason why I'm asking is the picture, or Joe, when you said somebody might choose to put three singles on, did you say six thousand square feet?
Uh, three, uh, singles each on six thousand square feet, yes.
On six.
Three units on six thousand?
No, no, three single-family homes, each one on a six thousand square foot lot.
Because I will say, my cousin that lives in Westford, they're in like a, I think they're a half-acre lot development. But what they have is instead of the single well for each house, that development has a well for that development, a common well, and then they all pay a fee for that common well. Um.
Is that the same for sewer?
There is no sewer in Westford. It's all septic system.
So it, does each house have their own septic and then just one well? Or?
It's a community well.
It is, when my cousin lives in Westford, it's a community well, but I believe they all have their own septic system because they're like half.
Half-acre lots?
You go lots, yeah. They're a little bit smaller than like, you know, they have like acre, two acre zoning in certain sections.
Well, then the other issue is a few, two, six thousand square foot lots. Uh, they're gonna be covered, the bedroom capacity will be covered by the septic to be available too. So you pretty much commit those to one or two-bedroom units, I would envision.
If they were two families?
Uh?
You mean if they were two families, they'd be limited to one or two bedroom units?
I'm, I'm saying, in terms of the current health requirements in town.
Yeah.
For the septic?
For the septic. It's based on the number of bedrooms.
Right.
And, a, uh, so if you look at a six thousand square foot lot, the septic requirement for a three-bedroom probably will not be achievable in terms of septic design with the current standings.
Right.
Oh, I see, right, so, right, so we actually did a little experiment, uh, a little design in the office, and, um, we think that it, like, the, the six thousand square foot minimum here is, uh, is right on the edge of being buildable as a single-family home. Right on the edge with a septic, of a, right, like, it might limit the number of bedrooms, issues like that. Should a developer decide to go that route, go the single and two-family home route, they'd most likely be choosing, you know, the, singles would be on six, maybe slightly over six, and two bedrooms, they would, they'd probably have to go up higher than 6,000 square feet to get a two-bedroom. They, so, you know, imagine a mixed neighborhood of singles on between 6 and 8,000 square feet and two families between 7,509.
So, a 6,000 square foot, lot footprint would be suitable for tiny home kind of construction?
Yeah, a six, yes, or even, I, it would, the tiny home type of construction, or I'd even go above the term tiny home, a small home type of construction, you could probably put a two-bedroom house on a 6,000 square foot lot with its own, with its own septic. And it would really, you'd be pushing it, trying to get, trying to get beyond that. Just as a bit of explanation, where the number 6,000 comes from, the minimum, the minimum maximum we were talking about earlier, the law, the MBTA Communities Act requires that communities allow multifamily zoning at a density of 15 units per acre. You can cap it at 15 units per acre, but you have to allow it up to that. 15 units per acre works out almost exactly to a two-family home on a 6,000 square foot lot. It's like a two-family home on a 5,900 square foot lot. So, as, and where I designed this zoning, this alternate route zoning as something that the town would be happy if the developer chose that, I didn't want to disincentivize that route. I wanted to have the zoning show, you know, that you can still build at about, at just about exactly that 15 units per acre. You can still build just as densely if you're doing ones and twos as if you choose to go with multifamily. Otherwise, you'd be steering the developer towards the multiverse. So, that's where the number 6,000. If you want to, if you want to turn to the language of the law, if you want to turn to the language of the bylaw, I feel like I have marching orders on the map. You want more, you want more of an analysis of District 3. I need to come up with a more appropriately sized District 3 and come up with some options for how to design it. You know, to maximize, how to design it so that it will be well, so that the development will be well laid out.
Personally, we've had conversations about looking at our zoning districts to allow for tiny home construction. And we don't have any provisions in town for that. So, the 6,000 square foot lot scenario would accomplish two things. It would provide another housing type for the town. And then I like the idea of individual ownership of the units rather than all high-density housing, apartment-style multifamily building. So, I favor that approach. And so that would have impact on, in other words, with that kind of scenario, it seems like District 1.2 would not work.
That would not work?
Because of the narrow.
What about all this stuff back here?
The 100-foot width on District 1.2 was chosen specifically because we think they'd be able to put in a right-of-way and some of these small lots, and one row of these small lots.
I wanted to verify that, yeah, okay.
That gives us, that gives us 60 feet in that north-south direction.
This works a lot better for what we just talked about.
So, it would actually be this one, 1.2A. To get to this size, instead of this size, you have to go to the higher density.
Right, so this is what we talked about, yeah. I remember that, no?
We consider buses and schools and kids from all the way out here versus over here? That does to Westfords, is that a consideration?
Kids everywhere, kids all over, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We had studied other areas of town previously, trying to find different locations. And, you know, the school is down here. And we had spent quite a bit of time looking at that area because we already have commercial there and with that kind of density housing, people could walk to stores instead of being in vehicles. But other things surfaced with the aquifer and conservation land and everything else. These were not going to be acceptable. So, that's why we're pretty much looking at this scenario and this scenario after we've eliminated a lot of other options. We tried different ways to find different places to do this. The only one that we're not considering here is the Emery Road one.
That's, that, no, that is District 3. That is...
Emery Road is?
Yeah, this is Emery Road.
Yeah, they're across from Emery Road.
Oh, across from Emery Road.
Right.
Where is that?
That's... That's, is this Emery, that's Emery Road.
Emery Road's on 13, right?
Yeah.
Oh, so across from where?
Right, that's, right, that, right, that, that's the one that's still too big. That's District 3, that we, that we need to go back and shrink. Right. Right, and right, and I'm sorry that I didn't come back to you with an appropriately sized District 3, but we, it's going to take some more, we're going to have to work more with Jessica and whoever from the board there's decisions there that aren't just, you know, the planners taking into account or stuff. They need to take more open expertise and look at it.
I think, in order to help you, District 1 alternatives, I personally think District 1.2A would be more favorable than the others because we could implement this tiny home zoning concept. It preserves a large percentage of the original commercial area. And to envision low-rise housing or, you know, one- or two-story structures here would be far more palatable than going to higher-rise densities. And there would be better opportunities for town water. The developer would have to obviously arrange to get it there or a common well area.
Or did you say that maybe it took into Lunenburg water supply?
Yeah. I don't know if it goes that far.
Maybe it goes through the town line?
I don't think so.
Or does Lunenburg have well water too?
No, possible, it has town water, but...
This is not something we have to decide today, right?
No. But what we're doing here is we, as the board, have to make a recommendation at the town meeting because the town has to approve it. So there were so many, if we don't narrow things down, we could be there for years trying to select a site.
Well, the thing is, once we have public hearings, once we come to what the overlay bylaw would be voted on, the public hearings take place and all the, how you came to the decision comes before the public and then you're looking for their input. Like you say that about the water, but in District 3, that's where the water tower is. As he said, you can, it's on a hill. It's from Emery Road. So, or Fitchburg and Emery when you're there. So, I mean, there's pluses and minuses to all of them. And I'm not sure, because we originally had three and now we're just talking about two, right? Because we had a...
Yeah, MRPC is strongly recommending against the former District 2 because it only has its frontage on Old City Road. And we are not recommending rezoning, putting a multifamily overlay district somewhere where it only has access on a small country road.
Right, but Old City Road, that's Fitchburg Road on those, like 1.2 and 1.2A.
Right, having it, having two means of access and having as a back door that go out onto Old City Road as well as a front door to the development off of Route 13, that would provide perfectly good access, that wouldn't overburden Old City Road. That wouldn't create a public safety issue because most people in the development would be using the new road.
Joe, for, just for clarification, there is no requirement that the site have two access points?
There is no requirement, even in the MBTA law? There's, there's no, I mean, the MBTA law doesn't give us directions about how things are...
Right, in other words, you're recommending this because it would be better.
I recommend, yes.
Right, but in terms of the town, we don't have to make that provision in the overlay district. In other words, for example, the developer, if we didn't have that panhandle tied into... I'm just exploring this, I'm not making an opinion, but if you did not have that panhandle link to Old Fitchburg Road, then the burden would be on the developer if he wanted another access point. Also, if that wasn't there, then the planning board would review that and say to the developer, well, you have to get another access point, however you do it, it's up to you.
That would violate, that would put you, that would put the town in a rough position in terms of being in compliance with the MBTA law.
No, because...
They have to allow, the multifamily has to be allowed to be built by right. And if they have to acquire some other permit from somewhere else, even if it's not a permit for the multifamily housing, if it's a permit that they need in order to secure their second means of access, that, or their means of access, then that wouldn't count. We just had a problem, Sterling wanted to rezone this piece of land by the town line and the access to it was Lemonster. And they drew up their bylaw, making everything by right, which is perfectly good, but the state didn't like it because the town of Sterling can't guarantee that the city of Lemonster is going to allow access to that site by right. So, what I'm saying is this topic that you're bringing, that you're bringing up, put it in such a, the concept of locate the multifamily overlay district in such a way that it's only has access on, it only has bad access on a country road and then use the fact that it only has bad access on the country road as a barrier to development. If there's a permitting angle to that, it would be...
They want the best property for this project, that's what they're saying to me, you know?
So, but you're saying, why couldn't you just have one access?
I'm saying, I don't know where, where, in other words, what we recommend, the state's going to review, okay? So, Joe was trying to tell us now that if we don't consider this, the state could have a problem with that.
Yeah, the state could have problems.
Right, but this, but there's nothing specifically saying that you have to have access to separate roads.
That, that's right, that's right, and what you could end up with is a site that doesn't have a good way to provide access from two separate locations. And so, you have a 178-unit development built with only one access. And that, I would add, we're, we think that would be a very undesirable outcome for the town. It would raise a public safety issue and a transportation and circulation issue in terms of overburdening particular intersections and roads. I mean, yes, you could, yes, you could make developers build this, and not require a second.
I'm not suggesting that what I just mentioned is better. I'm just suggesting what the people understand why it is what it is and why you're proposing.
Right, 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 we're recommending, to the extent possible, allowing for two meaningful, for choosing a site that would allow for two meaningful means of access. On the merits, a development this size really needs two meaningful accesses. We can look more at District 3 to see if we can make that happen. Well, if that's a rule of the board.
Right, so, in an overview, Joe's going to take another look at District 3 and see what that could generate. I don't know if we want to give him guidance or direction of these four scenarios now so these can narrow things down more. I don't know, what do you think, Laura?
I personally like the 1.2 for the future of commercial development. That's that Lunenburg line.
1.2 or 1.2A?
Remember, 1.2, it's...
It's a higher density.
Yeah, 1.2 is a little bit too small, as we run that through the compliance model, it gets it to 135, only 135 units. I included that one to show the possibility of you could have a slightly smaller district than we've been talking about, but you'd have to give a little on the density and height.
Have to increase the density.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I think I was looking at 1.2A.
Yeah, 1.2A is the one that, is the version of that with the 100-foot strip that it would be compliant.
And that's, that's a product of what we asked Joe to do last time when he came up with the concept of dividing that whole area and preserving the commercial district as much as possible. So, the difference between 1.2 and 1.2A is the density, where we would have to increase the number of units per acre versus District 1.2A, which is the current 15 units per acre. So, in looking at that and looking at it in light of trying to do some kind of tiny home kind of opportunity in town and preserve as much commercial space as possible, I find I like 1.2A best of all the choices here.
Yeah, I, I agree, I like 1.2A the best.
I was also leaning 1.2A. But I understand Andrew's comment on District 3, being closer to the town center.
Yeah, remember, there are advantages to District 3's location. Town, closer to the town center and there is at least one other multifamily development that's along that same stretch.
Right.
Those are close, they're close, those are about walking distance.
That's right.
That, in terms of bus access, along Route 3. That uh in terms of bus access, uh along Route Three, along Route 13 there.
Is there any sort of community that we can do a filter to, just to get some context of what a hundred and twenty-five, two-hundred-and-fifty unit, similar sized
Just go down Route 13 in Lunenburg and see that huge Hatton complex.
Oh, yeah, but I think he's asking about the, the, the small lots, ones and twos.
Oh, ones and twos.
The six thousand
I have no concept of what a hundred and fifty unit uh development would look like. When I was in HCP, we were getting ninety, yeah, single family, two to three thousand square foot.
And, and knowing this, Joe, um, this was being viewed based on the six thousand square foot lots here.
Um, that, not actually, that is being analyzed uh under the dimensional requirements for the multifamily housing. Remember, the mandate under the law is to allow multifamily housing at a density of at least fifteen units per acre by right. So, uh, I, so I think it's likely that uh if it was built out as ones and twos, that it wouldn't be, that it wouldn't come out to the same number of units. But I also think if it was built out as multifamily, it also wouldn't come out to the same number of units.
I think that's, it's the language here that's a problem, because multifamily means exactly that, attached units.
Right.
So, this whole concept of trying to make this work for a tiny home opportunity.
Yeah, so, so let's, let's, let's start, let's start
Yeah, this gets so sticky and complicated.
So, in, in concept, talking about this um uh for the people who worked here last time, in concept, the MBTA Communities Act requires that the town allow multifamily housing at a density of up to fifteen units per acre.
Right.
In it had, we should create a district that allows that. Now, that is not the only thing you're, that the town can allow in that district. The town can allow other things as well. Um, these are all overlay districts that are created. An overlay district means there's also the underlying zoning and whatever is allowing that underlying zoning, everybody retains their rights. So, the idea here is never been that these would be districts where the only thing anybody is allowed to build is multifamily housing. You're allowed to have other things that are allowed in them. So, I have written the law in s- uh in such a way that multifamily housing is allowed, two-family housing is allowed, and single-family housing is allowed. And what's more, I've written the law with two different sets of dimensional requirements, one of which is appropriate for a big multifamily campus and one of which is appropriate for a neighborhood of little streets with small lots and multifamily houses.
Good, so that would be up to whoever's developing it, really.
Yes.
So, the opportunity is there for fifteen units per acre regardless.
Yes.
But they don't have to build it.
Yes.
That's cool.
So, turning to the law, the first um language you see here, um Townsend has this issue. Your site plan review um section of your zoning is a special permit. You are not allowed to make the housing in this uh um overlay district contingent on a special permit. And yet, it's really important that your town retains site plan approval over, over these projects. Um, the difference between them, once again, under a special permit, the town can deny a project. No, we don't think that developing a multifamily residential community here in this location is good. We're gonna vote no on your special permit application. A site plan review is gives the, is for a project that is, a type of use that is allowed and will be, is allowed to go there, the town can't turn it down, but can condition it. The driveway has to do this, the elements have to do this, and the design has to do this. We think it's important, it's particularly important for the town to retain it for this project. So, how do we solve that, so that it's not subject to a special permit, but it is subject to site plan review? So, first of all, this language here, oh, by the way, the red lettering uh represents new language that you hadn't seen on the pre, that's new from the previous draft. This language here amends your site plan review um um ordinance in your zoning, your site plan review special permit section, uh it's got a list of exceptions. This adds exception number three. No site plan review special permits shall be required for byright residential uses constructed in accordance with the multifamily overlay district zoning. Byright residential uses in the MFD shall instead be subject to site plan review under section one fifty-four uh, one forty-five dash fifty-four two I of this ordinance. We have, there is uh a, its own little site plan review language here. So, that, which we'll get to in a moment. So, that's how I dealt with that.
So, there's no special permit that there is site plan review?
Yes. Um, you have seen this before, the purposes of the multifamily, um establishment and applicability. Um, it's superimposed over, and now I can't have final language here because I don't know what, which type of districts we're superimposing it over, but it'll be some combination of RB and OCD, as shown on the Town's Official Zoning Act. Um, same, same issue here. The definitions haven't changed. Um, permitted uses, now, this is, uh, this hasn't changed from last time, but this is the basic part. In addition to all other uses allowed by right, the underlying zoning districts, apartments, multifamily buildings, two-family dwellings, and single-family dwellings are allowed as of right in the MFD. Okay, um, this says allowed as of right, does not say allowed by site plan review. What causes site plan review is you have triggers in your, it triggers. If you have this many parking spaces or this many square feet or whatever, building this will trigger your site plan review. Um, and there are development standards, the same development standards as last time, except I moved them out of the uh, the um uh definitions, uh because then it wasn't really a definition. Um, dimensional standards. These are the two sets of dimensional standards, uh section F here. Following dimensional standards shall apply to apartments slash multifamily dwellings in the MFD. Uh apartments, multifamily dwellings, as you know, is a defined use already in your zone. So, eighty feet frontage, eight thousand square foot lot size.
You didn't change these from the law.
Right, right, um, I've got that maximum density um still on there. Um, front yard, rear yard setback, setback from street fifty feet, front yard setback fifty feet. Um, and then below it, the following dimensional standards shall apply to single-family dwellings and two-family dwellings in the MFD. Now, I did put the word feet there. So, taking a look at these options. Um, frontage for uh forty feet, minimum lot size sixty feet, maximum lot coverage thirty-five percent, setback and our setbacks reduced to ten feet. Um, minimum lot width forty feet, rear yard setback twenty. We're still um at the three stories, thirty-five feet um in both, as, as, as your height limit. Uh, open space requirement sixty-five feet and maximum residential density fifteen units per acre. Um, no buildings shall be located closer than fifty feet to Fitchburg Road. The minimum setback distance for freestanding accessory buildings shall be five feet from all lot lines. Uh, this is changed from ten. I've looked in your um, in your zoning at five is what's generally already there. This was going to be an increase, and I started thinking about this. And especially for the um, the small lot, single and two fam- family homes, five feet is more appropriate. It's uh, it, it, it makes it possible to have a shed.
To have a shed.
To have a shed, right, that's an accessory building. This is, once again, the minimum setback, this is for freestanding accessory buildings. So, we're not talking about the residential buildings.
Okay.
Sheds, um detached garages. And something else that occurred to me is, they don't really have freestanding accessory buildings uh along the perimeter of multifamily, of campus developments. This is, this is a topic for the, for the single and the two-family lots. And then these, this is your standard.
All right, those all make sense.
Okay, okay, parking, going to G. The following parking standard shall apply to apartments slash multifamily dwellings within the MFD. I did not change that to residential uses. This maintains your two per, I believe it's a cross-the-board two-per-unit
Right.
Um, standard for your, for single-family homes and your two-family homes. It reduces it to one point five for multifamily, because once you've got a multifamily, you can start taking advantage of economies of scale. You've got the big shared parking area, and so, you know, there's twelve units in the building. They're not all gonna have a guest at the same time. The three units that have a guest at that time will be, will be, use the park. But, um, I wanted to, I thought it was important to leave that to uh, uh to leave that only apartment multifamily dwellings. Uh, the previous version of this had this at one. And I, it, it, it should be at least one point five.
I agree.
Or, no, no, I'm sorry, I think the previous version said each uh one point five parking spaces shall be granted for each unit. Um, and I changed that to at least, so that it was a minimum, not, uh, not a minimum and a maximum.
Okay.
And we don't want to prevent a multifamily uh developer from putting in more than one point five, if that's what they choose.
Well, yeah, because typically
Create all the, all the
They have two cars.
We're getting, I've got Chaz.
I'm sorry, uh, Madam Chairman, can you start that again?
Chaz, can, do you have a comment? Chaz? Oh, you must have asked me before. And I had my phone off. Okay, um, well, I, what, what are you saying is, is the next step? Can you just quickly go through your changes and um
On to the next, okay, go ahead.
I have to wrap this up, can you please go through your changes?
Okay, um, the next change is in section I, um, we have been naming the uh, yeah, this is, we are no longer going to, I highlighted this and didn't replace it. We're no longer gonna use the Boston Quincy Mass. Uh, we're going to use the Fitchburg Lemonster um fair market value area for your affordable units. Because if we used the um uh Boston Cambridge Quincy Fair Market, then it wouldn't be affordable.
No.
Um, so, I thought, I thought I had changed that already.
Wow, I guess so.
All right, and uh, the, oh, Jay, um, this is the internal um site plan review section. It had, it was, uh, it was already here. I just added this language, which echoes what I said at the beginning.
Right.
And it says, all byright residential developments in the MFD shall be subject to site plan review. Um, all byright residential developments, okay? Um, I wanted to limit that because uh, remember your MFD, if you choose um one of the District One options, it's gonna be overlaid on top of your commercial district. Um, I did not want to impose new regulatory burdens if somebody wanted to uh build commercial. Uh, remember, this is an overlay district. The owner retains their rights under the underlying zoning. So, anything they can do with the commercial, they can still do, even if it's overlaid in this zone. So, that's why it's only limited to all byright residential. Uh, and
Can I just make a comment? Use the Cambridge something plan?
Uh, the, yeah, the Boston Cambridge Quincy Mass New Hampshire Metro Fair Market Rent Area. We're supposed to be using Fitchburg Lemonster Fair Market Rent Area.
Who told you that?
Who told me that we should use that?
Yeah, I'm gonna tell
Well, nobody had to tell me that, I just immediately recognized it as mistaken.
Fitchburg and Lemonster are in Worcester County.
Yes.
Worcester County has a different rental, section eight numbers, everything. As soon as you cross over into Middlesex, which is Ashby, Townsend, Pepperell, it is Middlesex. So, that's, our rents, when they section eight here in this area, it's higher than Fitchburg and Lemonster. So, I think that may be where that comes from, because we're in Middlesex, not Worcester. Townsend is Middlesex.
But this is
I think that very well could be where it comes from, it could be the reason it was there. And uh, we think it's
I don't think it's appropriate for this area.
Right, uh, if the
I don't either, but I'm telling you what it is.
That's probably why it was, that's probably why it was put in initially.
State agencies like CHAPA and um, what's the other one? The one that runs, I don't know, I am
CHAPA, and, yeah, I know who you mean, and I'm blanking on the name too, but yes.
On um Atwood Acres and Townsend Woods, the agency that does that, um.
I'll see another
Everything there is under Middlesex rates.
Right, but this is, this is for a workforce standard now, which is appropriate for, say, you know, providing housing for the workforce in the town.
Yeah, but you're gonna have to go to workforce halls, it would be Middlesex key rates, not Worcester rates.
They're not, right, the housing in Townsend, you will get a cheaper house the same size in Lemonster in Fitchburg than you will in Townsend. So, you even forget the rentals. I'm telling you, it's across-the-board market values, because we have a Middlesex address.
Right, right, but these um are, what, these um FMR areas, they are regional. When it says the Fitchburg Lemonster, that's referring to the region, just like the uh Boston Cambridge Quincy FMR area. That isn't just Boston Cambridge and Quincy, that's Greater Boston. That, they just chose uh the three biggest sector-located communities for the name. The Fitchburg Lemonster Fair Market Rent Area includes um Fitchburg, Lemonster, and the surrounding communities.
Okay, so let me just give you, for instance, to maybe uh piggyback on, and you can go back and check on this, because if, when we do this as a bylaw, it's gonna go to Town Council, who's familiar with Middlesex County, and our bylaws can say and not say, and then it's gonna go to the state for approval. And again, we're Middlesex County. So, that's the only thing that I'm bringing to your attention. I would want it to be differently, but it's not.
Okay, okay, um, I will look more into this, um.
Okay, just, we can just leave it
Okay, those requirements to meet the Middle uh Sex County um standards are what, say, a fortyB developer or a uh, um, or a, a, a housing agency or somebody um would need to require under certain programs that are defining you as being in uh Middlesex County, where this is a local zoning ordinance. I believe that you would be able to use this different standard. And you, yes, you, this, these are
No, see, the reason why I say this is when we did the fortyB that had affordable housing in it on um Copperfield, whatever it's called, maybe that's not it, but it's off of Highland. It was under Middlesex guidelines by the state.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I will have to look into this more. I do not think you are required to. Um, I will have, this, this is a question I, I need to get a real answer to. Uh, if the state is requiring
I mean, you said that and it caught my attention, because I know it to be different. So, I just want you to look with, that's all, and get, and because I know our town
The way it was written with uh Quincy specifically, that was regional in the original version of this. So, this basically is not related to counties, but related to regions. Otherwise, it, it wouldn't have reference.
I'm, I'm just saying that it raised, it rang a bell with me, so I just, I just need to have that verified.
I agree.
It is also a fairly poorly-written law that is ve- obviously very much written by people thinking about the eastern Massachusetts suburbs. So, now that I'm thinking about it, maybe that it is hardwired in that it's the, that the rate has to be based on the Boston Quincy area. Because it never occurred to them to say to use the local
Well, that's not fair.
So, I'm gonna have to look into it.
Yeah, that's not fair.
I'll get you, I'll get you a real answer to this.
That's a big argument.
And before the next meeting. And before the next meeting.
There's an F M R. You can, you can tap it on the map and it'll tell you that it's, you have to use them. That area applies to the Boston, Cambridge, Quincy, Mass, F M R area.
Specifically.
Right on the line of, yeah, right.
Okay, I gotta wrap this up. We're losing.
Yep, you've got where to go.
So, if you could just get through this one and I've got just a couple more things and we can adjourn to the next meeting.
Uh, yeah, they, that is, I must, you, so this was me presenting uh the proposed bylaw to the board. Does the board have any further feedback on it?
I have, my feedback is just a pillage and junk there. You know, envisioning all the different scenarios that could potentially surface and uh I'm very pleased that you can impose.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um.
Joe, I do appreciate that very much and uh you, you look at that one portion anyway and get back to Beth with uh, yeah, that's okay, yeah, that's what it should be, yeah, that's what Town Council would approve, whatever. I mean, if you, if, really, we don't even wanna be doing this period. MBTA really has nothing to do with us. So, even though it has nothing to do with this, the state is still gonna impose it. Right? That's where we are. We're making, we're doing a zoning bylaw for something we would never have done if we weren't an MBTA affiliate and the state doesn't care that we have septic and wells. They don't care. You have land, no, I mean, Mara Healy was very, Chaz, Chaz would have been on telling you this because he's talked to her many times about this and nope, she won't even listen about, to anything. This is what she's doing and that's it.
Yeah.
Samantha, comply or not?
Well, I think from what I've been following and I've been following it in detail and I documented every uh news publication that I could find. Um, there's a lot of issues with several communities here. However, in terms of not taking on a lot, I think if we just come back with what we find would, would be acceptable, I think there's a strong possibility that this whole legislation may be either drastically modified or eliminated. Um, but in the interim, it's still a mandate and we still have to proceed as if we have to do it.
Uh huh. Correct. All right, so thank you much, Joe.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. I, we'll be back in touch shortly. Thank you. And I will, so I'm gonna, I'll see what we can do about that, um, about the District three, coming up with a new one. Uh, I got Kayla, our G I S genius, is going on her vacation uh in, in the next couple of weeks. So, uh, and a lot of this is mapping, so that part of it is probably going to have to wait a little while. But um in terms of the bylaw language, I'll get right back to you.
Right, well, the bylaw is pretty well comprehensive now.
Thank you. Three point one, review approvals of June tenth, twenty-four. We did get them today. I'll ask you if you were able to review them?
I was able to, but I don't know if anyone else was.
I read part of it.
All right, uh, if you don't mind, we'll just move this to the July eighth meeting. I did read them. It was, it was mostly Joe's report in there. It was over an hour, so, yeah, there was a lot of that in there. So, um, I'll give you guys until the next meeting, okay? On that one. And master plan implementation and maintenance. Um, Beth, do you have anything from Jessica was gonna be looking into something, I think?
Oh, yeah, the incorporation of the um energy committee goals.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, she's still looking into that in terms of the best procedure to have that done. So, we're still, it's in progress.
Okay, so just make that note. Um, I didn't hear on your report, uh, twenty-two Main Street?
Yeah, there, uh, there has been, the only correspondence received from the owner was on May thirtieth and that, that was an email stating that, it was actually from the owner's representative stating that they were going to send in a site plan, a revised site plan, and there has been nothing received.
Right.
And they know thirtieth.
Not surprising.
So, I, so before July eighth, well, June thirtieth will have passed, you'll send a reminder out? Like the twenty-eighth anyway? Beth?
Sure, yeah, okay. Which hasn't done anything either. It's been a short.
So, um, do you wanna do anything under four point one and four point two? Because Andrew had to leave.
Um, so for the announcements received from Townsend and other towns, there is the um appointment letter through, from Lance McNally. That's in your folders. Um, there is the letter from Representative Margaret Starsdale. Um, there are no uh notices or announcements from other towns this time. So, um, the other thing is the memo from Jessica regarding the um hazard mitigation plan and the municipal vulnerability preparedness plan. Would you like me to read that or do you wanna read that on your own?
I think it's on the portals. Make sure that Patrick, please.
Yeah, I can hit him up if you want to read that. Okay. So, at the next meeting, I would, um, you know, just leave some time to go over what, you know, the table and, and I can report what the board has already implemented in that plan.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much and I will be in person next time. I will probably have had some sleep, hopefully. Just to, just, oh, I mean, I was on a red eye last night, came in at five-thirty this morning and I've been going all day, so.
How's it doing?
Pretty bad.
Right, so we have the next things and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at P M.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at eight P M.
It's eight fourteen.
Eight fourteen P M.
Second.
I second.
Um, Kara Hopps says yes.
Robert Daring, yes.
And Shifrin, yes.